...regular meeting, six thirty P M. Monday, March the twenty second, twenty twenty one. We stand ready to take the place of leaders. Let's break seven five along with you can thank us, Lord, for our help and as you can give us your guidance, Lord, to make the right decision for people or towns. And Lord, we ask you put your hand over this nation and heal it and heal the ills and this COVID will pray, Lord, will go away. And Lord, just watch over us in my precious name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the right and sixth. One nation, one God, indivisible, infinite, just as far. Thank you. We have all commissioners here tonight, county attorney here, staff here, and then move forward. The board of commissioners, I have my opinion of the look over the agenda for the night, to do changes or additions. No, it's not that I have a motion to reprove the agenda that had here. All in favor? All opposed? I have. Thank you. Okay, moving to item four, consent agenda. Consent agenda, consent routine, be enacted by one motion, not special. If a member of the government by request, because of the item, the item will be removed with consent and considered separately. With no issue with consent agenda, so that has a motion with status in this entire. All in favor? All opposed? I have. Thank you. Okay, moving down to item five, public comment. I don't see open the floor. We've got nobody signed up to speak. So we're moving to item six, which are appointments on the six A part on recreation, recreation board base. I think we had two bases, Matt and Dan under. I have two applications. That's John Larson and that's Laura Copley. We appreciate. Right behind there. But I would appreciate the time and the energy you can put to serve in town because it's very important, Lord. Especially some changes of getting ready to happen in front of the public's growth of our park. And hopefully, when we come out from under this COVIDs and everything goes back up, we can get back to a lot of festivals and festivities. Our Founder's Day and the number of stats coming out, it looks like the stats on COVID, the death rates going down, hospitalization going down. Just want to speak on that.
Certainly, every year, exactly, we're like, if you want, we're gonna, we're about half the definition, right, the center? Couple months ago, we had a hundred patients admitted, just today, less than twelve. Great old three back scenes on the mark now. Just like you said, man, the change is happening.
Thank you, sir. Okay, uh. Ms. Law. Laura, would you like to say anything or?
I just thank you very much for the opportunity to serve on the board again. You choose to appoint me. I'm very excited about what's coming in the future and and hoping to quickly get back to normalcy with what we've had in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the commission? Not that I have. Okay, it's my station on the floor. I was not Laura Copley and John Larson. Any comments? All in favor? All opposed? I have. Lord, we hope that we're in the right. Laura, you come up.
All right.
I, my name.
I, Laura.
In solid word that I will support and maintain the constitutions and laws of the United States and the constitutional laws of North Carolina. All inconsistent therewith, that I will faithfully discharge duties of my office as part of the recreation board member for the town of Belleville, so heaven does. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much, Lord. Again, we'd like to thank Laura and thank Ms. Lawrence for the hard work and want to move on. Our park is one of the best places we have in our town. Tracked a lot of people with our common target there. We're beginning to now, we'll have online, hopefully, this year. And hopefully, an announcement will be made here in the near future about expansion of the park. We need the board members to help facilitate our events and what's going on, making suggestions to the board and the town to do an improvement. But we look forward to, hopefully, this year that we're really gonna have a lot to do and a lot of energy going into our park. And it's for building people, town and the whole area, other branch of things, bringing together, especially here to serve with requirement. People need to get out, families, our party on the weekend are full. You gotta have that release. Need to get out. Need exercise. So it's a good thing. I'm glad this has got it, can provide it to the people in this area. Any comments from the commission? And not, we will, we're on the sixteen. Plan board, uh. Plan board vacant since. Mount down there, I think we have one position open. Do have my application in Cheryl Page. Two years' month.
He did not use his right power to express his enthusiasm.
I have any comments from the commission on this position? All in favor? All opposed? I have. I thought we were late or. Matt and Dan under, I don't know. Appreciate it. Put my application in and report her, sir. Okay, we move to item seven on the agenda, seven A. God, please, most of our regional have this mitigation plan. Nathan Swaller. The park manager, the state incorporated, being online, we're gonna talk through.
Yes, he's here. Nathan, can you hear us?
I can. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir. Appreciate you taking the time this afternoon. The floor is yours, sir, and we're waiting to hear from you.
Okay, thank you. I'll be as brief and as thorough as possible. I'm gonna share my screen real quick. It looks like I've been disabled from sharing the screen, so I can just talk off the, uh. I can just talk off the slides. The, um, the Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan is a plan that, um, that the town has participated in for a number of years now. Um, and it is a required plan by FEMA in order for the town to remain eligible for certain, certain pots of FEMA money, specifically the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, uh, the Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program, and the Flood Mitigation Assistance Program. Those are, those are federal funding sources that, um, bear with me, I'll share my screen. Looks like I can do that now. Uh, those are federal funding sources. Can y'all see that screen?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jump ahead here. Okay, so those are, those three pots of money are FEMA dollars, basically, that are used to do home elevations and acquisition of flood, flood from properties. Um, you know, so it's important that the town remain eligible for that. And, um, participating in this Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan is the means by which the town can do so. So, we're at the, at the end of this process. We've, we've wrapped up the five-year update, which is required by FEMA. The town has participated. FEMA has reviewed the updated plan and, um, the next step is really to have the town adopt the plan by resolution. It's a large plan. As you can see, it's, it's a four-county plan. Includes Brunswick County, um, all the municipalities within the county, but also New Hanover, Onzeau, and Pender Counties and all of those municipalities. So quite a large plan. If you tried to print it out, it would be over a thousand pages. And I don't, I don't recommend printing it out, but it's a good document. We've got a digital copy of it that is, you know, a little bit easier to navigate, but there is information in there specific to Belleville. And, um, the town, town manager and, and others have participated and have reviewed the plan. Uh, I presented a copy, you know, a while back, and they provided their comments on it as well. These were the, you know, the processes. It took us about a year and a half. Thankfully, we got most of it completed before COVID hit. Uh, but we're kind of at the tail end of it now. We had a series of meetings with all of the counties and the municipalities. They all participated. And, um, you know, we looked at what the hazards are that could impact the town. And the thinking behind this type of plan, this hazard mitigation plan, is we look at what hazards the town's vulnerable to, but come up with solutions uh, to solve the problems that those hazards cause for our communities. And that's what mitigation is, taking a look at what can we do to reduce the impact of the next event before it hits us. Uh, I think we can all agree, we'll be impacted by some type of hazard event again in the future. Um, this is just an example of all the disasters that we've had since the last plan, uh, was, was approved. Just in the past five years, we've been impacted by a number of disasters, to include hurricanes, tropical storms, COVID nineteen pandemic. Um, these are the hazards that's included in the plan. So not only is it a lot of counties and municipalities that participate, but also a large number of hazards that are included in the plan, and that accounts for why it's such a large plan. Uh, but you'll note that it does include natural hazards like flooding and tornadoes, but also uh, man-made technological hazards such as, uh, you know, pandemics through infectious disease, hazardous materials and radiological emergency. So it's a, it's a pretty comprehensive document. Uh, like I said, a large document. Um, but again, it is required by FEMA that we, we do this type of planning, so we remain eligible for that funding. Just real quick, there's two types of mitigation. Basically, we can mitigate, um, our existing development in town. If there's anything that's prone to flooding or any infrastructure or roads or bridges that are prone to flooding, we can mitigate them uh, so they don't flood again in the future. But we also think about mitigation in terms of regulating future development as well through land use, zoning, and floodplain management. So that's basically the, the two types of mitigation that this plan will test. Um, and if you dive into the plan and look specifically, specifically at the mitigation action plan, uh, where we identify, you know, the steps we're gonna take to reduce the impact of that next event. Uh, these are some of the types of things you'll see in, in that section. From prevention, property protection, structural projects, and public education awareness. Just a, a lot of different things that were considered uh, with this plan. Um, like I said, this plan, we're kind of at the tail end of the process. We, um, we had a series of meetings, a year and a half in development. We had to get the plan reviewed by NCEM, the State Emergency Management Agency, and also Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA. Uh, they have reviewed the updated plan. Um, town staff have been involved, like I said, and have, um, reviewed and updated their part of it. And really, the next step is to have the board, um, adopt the plan, if, if there's no questions or issues, uh, with it, adopt the plan by resolution. And then I'll get that resolution submitted on up to, uh, the state and FEMA, and the town will be covered for another five years and will remain eligible for those pots of, uh, money that I mentioned earlier in the presentation. Um, we have a current plan that expires in the, in a couple of weeks, so that's why it's important and why we're coming before you today uh, for consideration of adopting this new plan. Uh, and I'm happy to address any questions that anybody might have.
Appreciate you taking the time to say, uh, I know this is not a case for any governor, mayor, any business you're operating, you need to develop a plan. Because we're all subject to, uh, natural hazards, like you said, and man-made hazards. You got a plan for it and have a plan to execute when it happens. So, uh, we appreciate all the hard work you've done, and I know our staff and everybody's done here. Do any commissioners have any, uh, question? I'm sure it looks like we're all ten satisfied with this, uh, plan. Lot of hard work to come in into it. We look forward to passing this resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, if y'all had a chance to read the resolution. Uh, resolution twenty-one dash oh eight, resolution by Belleville Board of Commissioners, adopted southeast, working on reading for as soon as this plan. If y'all would like, I can read this, uh, right. All of you have time to look at it, read it, man. For motion to pass, resolution, motion that, uh, all available, uh, all opposed, I have it, resolution, part twenty-one dash oh eight, passed. Ms. Law, thank you so much for taking the time this evening, and we appreciate your time.
Much.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Mount down there, the comments.
I just wanna thank you for that and sort of ask Nathan to unshare his screen.
Yes, ma'am. I'm trying to do that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, like I say, this is, uh, it's always bad because, um, you know, weather here. One of the most fragile things, it seems like, also tornadoes starting to hit us more than usual. Uh, flooding has become a real bad problem, seemed like in the last five years. The new mitigation plans, uh, didn't happen, because the things we do have come, does give you a vision, things where you need to go as far as your planning, where evacuation has to take place, if the public knows, we can get that information out to them. And rather sometime, but trying to find the finding in the mechanism, make changes that can stop a lot of issues, particularly with, uh. Okay, if there's no more comments, we're moving to uh, seven B. The Eagle Island Community Rowing. Uh, Mark, uh, we, uh, it wasn't Mark and Carl. The governor, come up, please. For your, sir.
My name's Carl Keifer. I'm the head of next, some of you, uh, I'm the current chair of, uh, Rowing Group. And Mark is the past chair of the United States. What I hope to do today, I would try to go through it pretty quickly. I'm not gonna be reading a lot of bullet points and stuff. What we hope to do is just kind of recap, uh, who we are and what we've been doing at the park. Uh, and what our current situation is, that we found ourselves in today, and what we hope to bring us our new folks on, going forward. So we, uh, became a partner of yours, dating, going back to about March, April of two thousand and nineteen, uh, where you agreed to have us become part of, uh, the park and set up ourselves as a rowing, a community rowing group uh, that embraces the river, the park, and also tries to, uh, uh, educate the public on what rowing is and how they can get involved and how healthy, uh, activity it is. So, something to be addressed though. The main thing I'm interested talking about is even in six months of two thousand and nineteen, we're able to actually get ten new members, uh, which is pretty good, in a sport that most people are kind of unfamiliar. Beginning of March, uh, all the way through August of two thousand and twenty, unfortunately, the pandemic kind of, uh, stepped on us a little bit. And so we have a lot less traffic, foot traffic in the park. But we still managed to get another six members, which was pretty amazing. And we did that largely by being present. We spent a lot of time in the boatyard, for those of you who've seen it, uh, over on the south side of the park. A lot of people are just curious. They see boats and they're not sure what they are, and so they come over and ask. And, uh, I tended to spend a lot of time there, and my wife does do, she took up fixing the boats. And, uh, so we spent a lot of time, a lot of people come in and ask questions, and we ended up, uh, I'll talk about a little, well, I'll talk about it earlier. We had, we instituted, even though it was during COVID, more formalized training, what we called learn the rope. Uh, the difference with, uh, sculling compared to kayaks and canoes is you can't just hop in one and go at it. You're going in the opposite direction, so you're actually going backwards, which is troubling for some people, uncomfortable. The boats tend to be much heavier, they're much longer, and they're much lighter. So what we do is, uh, we put in a formal program to get people comfortable. We usually start them on something called an ERB. For those of you who have been in the gym, it's a rowing machine essential. Uh, and then, uh, we take them out on the dock and we, we put them in, some of them beginning boats, and we actually tie them to a rope and let them come back and forth to get a feel for the boat. And we had, I think, twelve people actually go through learn the rope. We only got six members, and that shows you, some people are uncomfortable in the boats, and that's what we're trying to do. We want them to try it and see, but it's not for everybody. It's, it's a little bit different, uh, experience, but getting fifty percent is actually quite good. Um, on the right side, you see, this is going down a bunch of things, you know, contributions to the community. We've tried to become part of the fabric of the park. Uh, we really embraced the park as our home, and so we've tried to get involved in the cleanups. We just recently had a garbage cleanup along the shoreline. We've been part of your Founder's Day, uh, and, you know, we've, we've, uh, even made a small donation this past year just to try to keep activities going on in the park for how people think. Uh, for twenty twenty-one, obviously, uh, we did just get the cleanup, there's an ERB coming up. We're planning on also getting our group together again to do another cleanup. There's parts going towards uh, the DOT site where we noticed a lot of garbage there, so we can try to, try to fix some of that. This is a lot of words, and really, the only point I, I was kind of interested, I went to Belleville site and you had this nice statement on the goals about what it is, and then I was actually quite impressed that the things that we're involved in almost totally directly to what you, your interest in, environment, history, enhancing quality of life, and kind of getting away from the hustle and bustle. And, uh, you find, like doing sculling on this river, you get all that. There's some physical activity, but it's just, it's just really magical, almost, when you're out on the water on a cool day, throwing up and down, it's just, uh. And I think that, that has been very valuable this past year where people are, you know, hyper-stressed. So that's all I wanted to show there is a very nice correlation between Belleville's goals and what our goal and mission is. So the current situation part ourselves, when we originally came to the park, uh, we installed what is an interminable pier. Uh, and we believed that that would, uh, be satisfactory, that the statutes and the requirements from the town. We found out that, on public land, that's not the case. So we went through a series of attempts to get variances, to get them to accept that, and ultimately, they did not. So we, and that was several months ago, the town was very nice and kind of allowed us to continue to row while we tried to continue to sort this out. But ultimately, uh, we were asked by the county to remove our entire dock. We did that a couple of weeks ago. Uh, took it apart and removed. So that's left us essentially with nowhere to row, unless you do what's called wet rowing, which is a little more difficult for, for people who are not highly experienced. It means you're standing in the water and jumping into the boat and washing yourself out. Not ideal. But we have done it a few times under, where your motorized dock is, and uh, we have a couple of people have first, uh, houses over in Wrightsville Beach, and they've allowed us to use it. But so it's left us kind of trying to figure out what to do. Uh, on top of that, and, and I think it's, it's related, is, uh, we received a note from the town that says, uh, you're not going to renew our lease for the boatyard where it is right now. And so, and I think that's, that comes through in, uh, April third. So we need to find a solution, one way or the other, because we need to move our boats and stuff out of there. So during the time, during that time, you folks had won the DEQ grant. We had, uh, not that you could get that, the state grant. We, uh, we had originally found a grant, thought we could, we could actually get on ourselves, but that's not the case. That makes sense. It's a pound, it's a pound option. So, uh, we did everything we could, uh, to help you folks out, and, and getting it straight. It's not a huge grant, but a hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, it's good along with helping. So, uh, you undertook a design base for, uh, a non-motorized dock as part of, I think, three or four different things you actually did on. In doing so, it includes kayaks and canoes and paddleboards and rowboats. But it, but the requirements, uh, of what you need on the dock system for sculls, again, because they're longer and wider, and the likelihood of, of, uh, handicapped folks doing it is a lot less than in a kayak. That's just the way it is, because if you look at the sculling boats, they actually are on a slide, and you need to use your legs. There's no getting around it. You can't row on just with your arms. So we have different needs, different requirements, and we looked at it, and originally, we thought, well, maybe we can be part of that. Uh, there's a couple of reasons we've come to believe that's probably not the best solution, and that is there's a time lag that you folks are gonna have to go through in order to get all your approvals from the state and then the design and the location and all that. We're a small group. If we stay, you know, not engaged in rowing, the group will probably disappear, go away, and then we won't be around anymore. So that's a concern of mine. Uh, as a chair, I want to try to keep our group together. Second is, uh, again, um, the, the design requirements are different, and, and to add our design requirements to your dock system would probably be increased substantially with the box, and that doesn't really make a lot of sense in my mind to, to do that for our group that is more specialized, I guess. Um, so we've been speaking, uh, a lot with the dean and thinking through. We said, well, is there another place in the park that makes sense for us to go? If they're going to, because where your design is right now is exactly where we used to have our dock. And that makes sense. It's near, it's in that code area. It's on the south side of the park. It's a nice location. That's why we were there in the original park. So you can, please. So this is just a, I just want, I just, I'm not gonna go through it all, but you can see there's a big difference in the weight class and the length and stuff of our boats, and that's why I think one of the key points is it's a lot different than a kayak. You can't just pick up, uh, one of these sculls over your head and walk, you know, with, with a specific structure in place in order to. Uh, you can keep one there. So what we came up with, looking through the park, was a nice location over on the north side of the park, near the deep pavilion, education pavilion. There's a, an area over there where there's currently a single picnic table, planted on the. There's a an area over there where there's currently a single picnic table planted on a little bit of gravel tucked back into the woods. And that's a nice protected area that we thought would be a very nice place to relocate our boatyard. It's tucked away. If anyone has any concerns from, you know, if they don't like the look of the boats and stuff, it's a nice area that you can actually put our boats back into. The woods a little bit so they're not front and center on top of you. Just outside of where that entrance into that uh picnic table is a little. Potential path where people walk through the woods down and it leads down to water, which is a very nice area. It's it's relatively flat, there's sand, and we can actually put a pier in there. And we want to have it measured it, you'll see in a couple of slides, we actually want to have it uh for what the season is here. Uh so obviously, there's a whole lot of uh steps that we require for us to relocate. We have to, you know, get an engineering plant, which we've done. We had an engineer come out and look at it and say, is this even feasible? You know, if you can put a dock here based on the level of the water and the location. And he felt, yes, it's a big submitted at the common for uh family for a permit. So it is a good spot and it's doable, it's workable. Uh the question, I guess, is, you know, is it, is it acceptable uh for folks, you know, for you folks and the park? Is that a location that you can work with? Uh as part of that, if you can see some of the, it makes a lot of sense from standpoint also of, I know the gym is within water. And electricity over at the deep pavilion, we can just run a simple line over. It's not, maybe it's not even a hundred feet, I think, to where we're talking about our boatyard. We can hook up water, we can wash the boats, electricity uh which we'll need uh to power tools. And the boatyard's an important thing. It may not seem like important, but installing it is because you have to have these big racks to cover your boats. And the quad boats, we have the four-person boats, are forty feet long. The bell boats are about thirty, thirty-two, thirty-four feet, and the singles about two point seven feet. So these are long boats that sit on racks. They're also not made out of plastic. They're fiberglass and carbon. So when someone hits a log or something and breaks it, that means you're under significant repair. So we need room to do that. We need a lot of supplies uh to repair things. And so uh. That's one of the reasons you should have a decent boatyard. So you can pick the things up, get it, leave it around, and breathe in room to move that, not hurt yourself. We're also uh, we'd like to get, to put in a an equipment shed there because we have a lot of power tools. We have a lot of materials that are expensive. And leaving them out, especially in an area over there where it's a little more protected. Probably, I'm not saying there's a security problem, but people looking for mischief would have a better shot at getting something to think over there than they would on the south side of the park. So an equipment shed would give us the ability to put some things in there, lock it up, and then when we use them, we would have access. That's essentially uh what the presentation is. If you want to go uh through, so that's, if you look, there's a depiction of where it is. And we're looking at right now. And uh we've already uh kind of done a quick design of what the pier would look like. The pier system for sculling is really a three-part system, no matter where you are. It's the pier, which is the wood part where, and here it'd be a fixed one. With the big wood filings, just like the fishing pier. Then you have a ramp. To bring it down to what's called a floating dock. And it's essentially, I think it's probably what the plan is for the one thirty. Non-motorized, it's a floating dock of big plastic things, and that's what you want. And so it's a group piece uh thing here. Let me go, just go to the uh, somebody wants to show that. So we've got some pictures of the three areas we're talking about. That's kind of the opening where the proposed pier, as you can see, it's kind of a nice opening. There's a lot of logs and stuff, and we obviously clear and all that, clearing out any, you know, the brush so we can make a path. Probably a, it, we probably, uh if you look in the middle, we probably need about ten feet wide. But when you have a skull, which is probably about three feet, and then you have the rigging on it, that's another three feet on your side. So each boat's probably nine feet wide. So we need some room to to be able to bring those down. And then that's uh the little entrance to the boatyard uh that we saw. And that's all brushed and there's some trees in there. And obviously, that would have to be cleared up enough so we could, you know, put racks in and get some boats and so. That's pretty much all that. Do you want to add anything more?
No, uh you can want to get into the arrangements, the financial arrangements or?
Yeah, I mean, I guess we could do that. We would like, so the plan. The the plan we would have is we would finance building this pier. Uh because it's a fixed pier, it would belong to you folks. It's on public property. So we would. Uh figure out some kind of construction lease agreement, whatever, uh to know that we'd invest in. And it's similar, I guess, uh to what we did with the C3 market, where they built the thing and then we got a credit back for a certain amount of time based on what they paid. And that's what we would be probably looking for is uh, you know, some, something like that. We're not, we don't have a hard and fast number yet. We're probably talking though, you know, thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars. That's, no, it's not insubstantial. So it's a long-term lease. It would be something we would look for with the park to, you know, uh kind of get remunerated for the investment that we made in the pier. Um we again, you have to probably have a short-term lease, uh an equivalent lease, just to keep our boats where they are in the yard. While we're flushing out and building out the other boatyard animals that we've been doing for three months, maybe six months. Uh just so the most, you know, rather than where else, and move twenty boats uh. So we could get a different kind of lease that is still sitting there and then you move them all over there. We would salvage different kinds of lease for those uh ones who are old. That's kind of an arrangement or looking for us. Uh I don't think we're creating new ground since the, what is it, the C3 one, the early, it's finding very gone down path of investment and compensation.
Yeah, it's uh, it's, the pier is also near the education center and maybe, maybe available for programs there. Uh there's room for UNCW uh if they, if if I think they're interested in coming and rowing here too. There's some good advantages in this project.
Yeah, that's one of the nice things about this, depending on, you know, how much cleaner in order, you know, you want to do. They have really long boats, but there was an interest that someone in UNCW is probably the company that this part.
You know, helping anybody from UNCW.
We have, uh it's been sort of silent because it's been so difficult for them, but I I would assume that in the fall that they'd be. Bank uh organizing and getting out universities with a lot of restrictions on them as a club, what they could do.
Thank you. You already answered part of the question that I got. So UNCW does have a rowing club existing already?
It's a rowing club. So I don't know, but do they compete or is it more of a?
So they, yeah, they don't, they don't go to regrouping, they trade arts and their votes. Uh but uh but it's a club and it, and it turns over, but students turn over results.
Not the level of like a Harvard or, you know, where they're at, you know.
No, it's not.
They have long boats. They have, I believe they sweep boats, which is a different kind of sculling where you have one or. I'm on this side and another person and they do, they do that. So it's a very long, but there's this, yeah, they're like sixty-four feet long. So those are big, long boats.
They sort of have the same problem we do, getting, moving around, getting moved around, tying a place. So it could be a permanent boat situation. I think that would drive also.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd be some nice center if they were able to, they have to work it out too. I don't know if they're looking to draw with the university allow, you know, offsite and that kind of stuff. But from a teaching and education standpoint, which is something we're very interested in, in being a nice asset, a nice asset for the elderly. I think they launch from, they have trailers and they go into the C3.
They, they've been rowing uh uh the Wilmington Marine Center below the state port. Uh that they're, they've been there, uh but they're not, they're looking for another one. But they've been all over uh, we're down, we're down the beach and it's. And Jim, that's sort of an art issue too, is finding a permanent.
And I think when I talked to, you know, one of the attractions to them for the Brunswick River is. When you compare to the Cape Fear, the night and day from a rowing standpoint. The Cape Fear is very choppy because it's all the boat traffic in there. So when you're in a, you know, really a racing stall, which is very thin. You're subject to tipping very easily. The Brunswick is much nicer because you don't have as much uh of of the traffic with big boats to give. And uh it seems like it's protected a little better. So it's much easier. And it's also, it's much easier for new rowers. Having, having taken, uh started myself only a year and a half ago, I started over learning the rowing Cape Fear and it was difficult. And coming over here was like, I think that's one of the things they like as well, is it's a much softer uh dock.
Good location for regrouping.
Yeah, yeah, very good.
I think what we have to do and. Guess if y'all had any here to look at everything that's in the bag, which, we don't first came in. There's a lot of things I think in the family that assess and look at. We. Like the, we take a. My problem, I want to take a look at this and let the real plans maybe get into it more. Uh give our engineer that conversation, conversation about what has to happen. We got, this pier is gonna be put in, but you know, the public park system, anytime you occupy space, based on waterfront that we have. Um you know, people ask questions uh because, you know, we're trying to utilize it basically for the scenery, one of them would do. The access, even though we want to motorize and not motorize launches. And I hope that the rest of the annexation of properties we're gonna take in in the park system. There may be something there. We have to look at, we don't want top range there that may be better for uh your crew that we might be able to work with, even in this location. But the commission not have a problem, we'll like talk about it, do some more assessment, talk range and hear about it, and then give y'all. And the practice lockdown, uh when is kind of, when is the agreement run out?
Uh April thirty.
April thirtieth? We're gonna have to look at this very quick. I don't think we can sit here like that. We can't make any promises, but I think based on uh what you said here today, it's worth looking at. But we will give it a hard look and we'll try to give back. We do, we should come up and sit down, probably in maybe about a week. And he called, and he called my staff. We'll take a good look at it and when we get to sit down, we'll have a chat about it. Take a hard look at it. The park seven, I'm gonna be honest with you, from my personal view, a lot of it, a lot, I can be an avid in sports. And I consider that a sport. And I live for all these good possibilities that y'all can generate from being in the area. And I think it's worth looking at and sitting down and having a hard discussion to work with. I hope we can figure out something that we can work with, but we'll be honest with you. But I think we need to sit down with y'all. If y'all mind, I'd like to, I'll sit down. I said, we're calling it here, talk to the commission, then we'll get y'all in here and sit down, have a good chat and see what we got. Great. Actually, thank you for being here. Really appreciate it. Thank y'all for coming up. Any other comment? Lot. We will go on to uh seven Cs, space presentation portion of recreational age on Kent Goodman. Mr. Goodman, he is here tonight. Can't say enough about Kent. But Kent's had a lot of roles since he's been here. He's been a physician. He's been kind of solid partner with our town and the park's Brett. A lot of things you see out here, the flowers, the bushes, the plants, he does on his time, for his money. They don't come in and say anything about it. He just does it. Sure, talk to our staff. But Kent, a solid citizen and cares about this family. And he's done a lot for it. Kent, for that, we want, we can't thank you enough. Uh for your dedication you've given to town Belleville. Appreciate everything you've done. I wish we could do a lot more. If you'd like, you could do more of us than we can do for you.
It's my pleasure.
We do have a resolution here, which I'll read and I'll prevent, resolution twenty-one dash oh three. Resolution by Belleville Board of Commissioners, express a sincere appreciation and thanks. The Parks and Recreation Liaison, Kent Goodman, for his exemplary service to the town of Belleville. Whereas Kent Goodman is the liaison for the town of Belleville Park and Recreation Board. I have donated his time, expertise, labor, and service, services, campus time, over to the unified town of Belleville. And whereas Mr. Goodman has provided the foreign services pro bono to the Belleville community. Donated various plants and pine straw from town hall, landscaping new town of Belleville welcome sign. Unified conversion diamond island with oak trees and plants for the burn. Donated plants for the veteran memorial, and tributary in wall block and chairs and plants in the beginning of the education pavilion. Provided seasonal and perennial plants for gardens at the Caldwell Banker's Seacoast and Ranny Community Pavilion. And landscaped the gardens around the restrooms and flagpoles. Whereas the town of Belleville is honored to recognize Kent Goodman. We feel extremely fortunate to have his knowledge. And assistance over the years and greatly appreciate all that he has done. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Belleville Board of Commissioners express a grave appreciation and thanks for the dedication of Kent Goodman. For his willingness to donate his time, his energy, and landscape of service to beautify our town about the twenty-sixth day of February. Kent Goodman, I said, can't express herself enough. If I could, I can have a motion to pass a resolution twenty-one dash oh three. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? I have a comment for the board.
Yeah, I'd like to throw up a thing, Kent, too. And I know that I will not hold you to this tip. We talked about maybe in the last, it's a better, it's a better one. I guess it's not, I'll respect it. I guess I'm not holding to that.
Again, you're coming up. Thank you, Kent.
Thank you very much.
I was thinking, um, just to you.
Thank you so much, Kent.
We're, you don't, I don't have much to say. I might shake you up once or but.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Kent, you have something else to say?
Don't run, don't run.
Thanks, sir.
Well, that's the same way here, but people found what they found. The comments will move on to our eight oh business. But they don't run very well, probably. But they don't want a public access grant.
Sir, we can have Adrian from our friend of the Tony Cooper calls.
Adrian, are you there?
Glad to have you back.
Hello, yes, can you guys hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Hello, and I hope you guys are doing well. Um just quick update on the Brunswick Riverwalk project regarding the Water Public Access Grant. Um I believe it was last month, uh we talked about how there were basically going to be two phases of implementation. Uh for this project, the first one uh will be the easiest component, which will be to replace the boat ramp dock. So this is the piece that you guys removed um not long ago, uh the debris and then all the broken stuff from um the previous ramp, the wooden structure. Uh you guys got that out of there. So at this point, the most simple part of the project will be um to replace that. And we did receive uh the line item cost estimate for that, which is good because we needed that level of detail. And we also received. And we also received, um, a design that will give us an idea of exactly what the replacement will look like. I am going to set up a phone call, um, tomorrow, uh, to talk to EZ Doc because I would like to see what that design looks like on an aerial photo. So we can get an idea of, you know, how the, it will fit, you know, relative to size in that space. And, uh, once we have that part finalized and nailed down, then we are going to move on to uh, what we're calling phase two, which would be the canoe kayak, non-motorized um, boat launch. And for that one, we do already have the design. Uh, but again, we would like to see that overlaid on, uh, an aerial to see how that would look like um, comparative to size. And then, uh, we do, they're working on a line item cost estimate for us. Uh, so once we have, uh, once we have that, then, uh, what's uh, we're going to do next is take those, um, take the design and take the, the schematics and the drawings and the measurements. And we are going to reach out to a few other companies and get some cost estimates to make sure that we are, you know, in the right ballpark, uh, for these, uh, for these efforts. And then, um, hopefully we should have all of our options pulled together. And we can bring that to you guys, look at the final grant amount award and figure out how we're going to move on from there.
Adrian, we appreciate you a lot. Young lady, you've done so much work. You're on top of everything. We appreciate the information. We're looking forward to actually, uh, in the motorized, non-motorized launches then and, uh, just probably going. And I hope a lot of other things will be coming up here shortly when we're here for DOT.
Absolutely. And thank you guys. And you know, as always, if you have any questions, just let me know.
Any question for the commissions? Staff, y'all, if you've got anything with that.
No, sir. Just wanted to, um, thank Jeffrey so much for getting that extension approved for our candidate.
Adrian, thank you. Jeffrey, thank you. Uh, we know you're always working behind the scenes, so we don't have to worry about it. We thank y'all for everything y'all put, you know, uh, outstanding job.
Thank you.
They did a lot of good things getting ready to happen. We just gotta keep pushing forward. I think we got the right team, the people together. Make all these projects happen this year, or at least get that first step or second step and go forward, uh, looking forward to it. Okay, we'll move on to, um, A B. Ian, you want to talk about that?
A movie. Um, we were trying to get together another driving movie for May first instead of having bounder stage like we normally do on May, on the first Saturday night. Um, we're trying to come up with an alternate plan and, uh, the, our correct word came up with a, another driving. So we're trying to put together our own system and not have to rent one. Um, you know, we're in the process of doing that now. Um, we have commitments from two vendors, a dessert truck and a hot dog truck. And, um, they agreed to do the popcorn for us. So that's a good thing. But I think we have the plan in there, um, in your package of, uh, everybody's responsibilities on this. Um, our plan, if it goes through, I think it's going to be fine, is just lining everybody up in the school parking lot this year instead of compacting up on one thirty-three. So we're going to have a police officer out there a lot earlier this year, or this time. Um, get the parking lot cleared out and then let them start coming in and start lining them up and parking them. And then keeping trucks and all the vehicles in the back. So we have a pretty good plan of what's going to happen. So shoot for May first.
Yeah, I think, uh, what was that, Adrian, I talked about. Parking status or, you know, what happened last year was tragic.
Yeah.
A little bit of foreplanning.
So I'm thinking about, we school that. Yeah. And we're going to line them up in the school. And then send them, when we're ready to open the gates. We have, uh, parking attendants in place with walkie talkies to, uh, bat him across with the officer and park him. That should work out a lot better this time.
Okay. I think also since we got on here and got Adrian online, it's gonna be jumping a little bit, I think. By the time I can tell if we have an issue with it. We'll go ahead and down to eight D. Since we got Adrian to talk about the first part, we'll talk about the vision. Twenty thirty plan. Adrian, could you address that now?
Yes, sir. Um, so for the Vision twenty thirty plan, um, we are very close to being able to start the public input period. Uh, so we have, uh, the website, which is actually a part of the town of Belleville's new website. Uh, if you go to the town of Belleville's website, there's a planning tab and underneath that you can click on, uh, Vision twenty thirty. Um, and that website is in the very final draft stages. Uh, we have created a hard copy survey. So this will be, you know, a piece of paper folded in half. Um, we have a copy in English and a copy in Spanish. Uh, we can hand those out at events. Uh, we can pass them out at the park. Uh, but people can actually fill that out on a hard copy, um, hand it back to a staff member, drop it off at town hall, um, or whatnot. Um, and those are finalized. And I also created a video that's really intended to help, you know, bridge the gap between, you know, trying to keep some social distances and safety measures in place while doing, um, you know, public input period. But this video is just very high level informative. And it's created so that someone can watch this video and then take the survey online. Uh, so we have completed the video and we have also completed the online survey, which will be in both English and Spanish as well. And then the other piece that we'll have for the public input period is, um, I have, uh, these postcards. And these are ones that I'm thinking we could hand out at the park or, you know, if anybody's out and about. And it may be for somebody that, you know, when you're having a conversation with them, you can say, you know, we're collecting this public input here. Take this postcard and then you can scan the QR code when you get home. And it'll take you directly to the website. So it's just a piece of paper you can hand somebody that, you know, tells them how to go online at a later time and fill out the survey. Uh, so those will be the components that we'll have for the public outreach period. And then we are looking at the two public meetings. Uh, we'd like to have one um, at the park and we'd like to have one at the future downtown area. Uh, we're looking at the week of April twelfth through sixteenth. And if we can do those two meetings, the week of April twelfth, uh, through the sixteenth, then I'm thinking we will close the first um, public input period, April twenty eighth, which will be two days after your next, uh, board meeting. And then at that point, we should have all of the surveys, uh, received. We should have all this information and I can start to compile that um, to insert into the draft Vision twenty thirty plan.
That sounds great, Adrian. Uh, any comments or questions? Adrian, um, I did have a sit down. We were talking about wanting to get a hotel on the riverfront. I actually sat down with the owner of, of one of the Hilton Hotel chains personally, the actual owner. Uh, he has some time wants us to put a team together. He wants to bring his team down. So you go down, walk out to the riverfront and sit down and talk with us.
That's great.
So, um, hopefully that'll be in the near future. But if you kind of think about that, think what you think is a good timeframe, we'll try to set out with him to speak.
Absolutely. I'll be sure to be there for that.
Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you.
Okay, another conference. We'll go to A B, uh, street repairs, rain prepared and update.
I'll start.
Okay.
Uh, so for one thing, uh, following up on the street report that I did last year, showing all the areas in town that, uh, can be some asphalt repairs. I'm talking to the team. Sound like the town wants to move forward with, uh, doing repairs within the Highland Shores subdivision. So, um, I'm in the middle of pulling together details and specs so that we can share them with a contractor and get that worked.
Okay. And I think that also what I'm bringing up, talking about street repairs, y'all looking, you can get it in the DOT request. About Redwood and set maintenance of the old Blackwell Road. And I think y'all know that section that pulls off the, where the new section ends goes into the circle K. But two lots are there. If we go in and do a resolution about that road and our plan. It's resolution, uh, twenty-one dash seven. Resolution by Belleville Board of Commissioners, request the North Carolina Department of Transportation to transfer ownership and maintenance of Blackwell Road to the town of Belleville, North Carolina. Where the town wishes to accept ownership and maintain responsibility for the old Blackwell Road. We can locate in the town of Belleville, North Carolina, where it's the North Carolina Department of Transportation office. And town have agreed that this road should be assessed by the town for ownership and maintenance responsibility. A lot of times things will be abandoned by North Carolina Department of Transportation, ownership and maintenance responsibility. Therefore, it be resolved that the town of Belleville here brought a request in North Carolina Department of Transportation to abandon ownership and maintain responsibility for the old Blackwell Road, shown on the exhibit attached in there in with that town of Belleville should accept ownership right away and ease up for the driving road as well as making progress for the improvement that can be right away. And roads driving into a clue, but not limited to asphalt pavement. Base material curb, gutter, sidewalk, drainage system, and blade structure. With that right away upon notice, the case will improve by North Carolina Department of Transportation. Any comments? If not, then I will bring a motion to pass resolution twenty-one dash oh seven. All in favor? All opposed? I think it's a good thing to log rank with town. I don't think that's going to be a big issue as far as us being able to maintain this. DOT has been a good partner with us about pretty much everything we do. And we've got a great workmanship and I hope that goes forward. Okay, now we'll go to, uh, A C, wrong action update.
Just wanted to get a look at the majority of the staff, uh, trying to see the first act scene and the second. That will be completed this time Thursday. So I'm very excited about that. And, um, we are all, we would just say, you know, we're going to have, uh, we will work with the county. We will have additional details when you, you know, by the Sunday.
They didn't call me for this.
Thank you for the staff getting the fact things.
Thank y'all. I think everybody, not everybody said. There's no comment on that. We'll move on to E. Uh, personnel policy update, um, down there.
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Goodman. Commissioners, for the review of personnel policy. This is the final update. Uh, we are now presenting to you the revised section on grievance appeals and disciplinary sections, which we will have to use. And we would ask that you provide your comments to us by the end of the week. We would like to have a comment here to go ahead and adopt this island.
My second personnel policy, um, it's always kind of have, very important. Help mitigate a lot of headaches, potentially have. And they call seven, they've got, uh, they've got to follow. So, um, personnel policies are very important. Guide lines, town operates by. Personnel is always one of the key problem areas in business. Anyplace you go. So you gotta have the guidance and the regulations to handle. But not down there, thank you. Any comments from the commissioners on that? If not, we'll move on to out nine, regular agenda. Um, resolution twenty-one dash oh six, resolution by Belleville Board of Commissioners, where we're in the town, available to forty-fourth birthday. Okay.
Um, I just wanted to, to slide, if you could look at that picture when you go real town halls about the violation. That is not. Proud of everything that we've accomplished these past few years. Can't wait to see what's going to happen. And great leaders, we're taking us in the right direction. We've accomplished that. So thank you so much.
Yeah. Um, my comments are with the town that seem like in the last just two years have gone through a great transformation. And the rest that's heading in. Uh, thank you. We incorporated nineteen seventy-seven. But I think all the current board, our staff and everything, that we are heading in the right direction. And we need to, uh, I hope this year will be good for the people of our town. We're going to have a lot of information to put out. Once it comes to tuition, where we can put it out on what's really happening. And potentially what's going to happen in this town in the next five years. I think the town people are going to be very happy. Behind it, getting ready to happen. It's not going to take much more before we can hopefully release a lot of this and then in the public domain. Keep relooking for some of the great things that are happening out soon. But I do wish us a happy birthday since I've been here since before it was, uh, even warm. The changes I've seen over this period of time, given that I believe how fast it's happened. I'm basically, when I moved here, you know, where we're sitting right now in the rental park. We're circa K and that is called the Mia Hotel. And that little restaurant there, Lady Vibe, basically called the Hall Valley. Good kind of food and our two other hotels across the street. Which, uh, perceive themselves in their hands and in this and everything that's going on. And, uh, I won't even get into that. But see where we have, uh, no, one time. The location of our town was the hub of the north end of the county. And everything happened where this old downtown area was. That was it for the north end. Got truck stop, hotel, motels, um, restaurants, hot dog stands, stations. And that's where everybody stopped before they went in the room. They had with a bypass that was put in on Saturday four. It died almost a week later. Gone, nothing left. Now you look at it and projections everything's going to happen between us and Waylon. It will surpass, surpass all your wealth of this. And potential growth and everything that's happening. We, right now, the team that we currently have. I want to thank the bishops, our staff and our team. We're heading in the right direction for a change. We've had a few bumps. But it seemed like those bumps also have helped us move forward. I'm looking for bright future. Again, a good, a resolution twenty-one dash oh six, resolution by Belleville Board of Commissioners, for the man's birthday, nineteen seventy-seven to twenty twenty-one. And I have a motion to accept the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I have it. Thank y'all. Okay, moving on to B, transportation update. I can keep that short. I probably gotta meet some of them. Uh, with the board. Basically, what has happened with the WMPO, the updates on our roads and everything. Funding and the budget for DOT is basically back on track. A lot of the, uh. Projects that were pushed in the background are now being funded again, back on track now. Because of what happened, a lot of these projects are still backed up on from a year, almost two years. So, uh, our project will push back a year. But they're all coming back online. Seems like, uh, we're starting to get back on track. A lot of hot islands will be seeing come up, gonna be real, real light. Big push for that right. But, uh, I think that's way in the future, uh, with all the studies, environmental issues. And just the massive, massive job that's gonna have to happen. That's gonna take a while. This will not happen quickly. It's coming in over on our side, our county. Got the crossover seventy-four, seventy-six, as well as incorporated four twenty-one. That's gonna be a big problem. Other than that, that's update, we'll have our next meeting, hopefully in April, I can put out some good news. Okay, moving on to aisle nine, C, budget workshop. We're not down there, we won't put out the information on that.
Yes, thank you, Adrian. We just wanted to, uh, confirm. I think on twelve, that's a Monday. That's it, possibly, it's the evening for us to have the conference. Everything ready for you, if you have any special projects you'd like for us to do then.
All right, we'll move on to aisle ten. Position on the North Carolina General Statues, one forty-three, dash three, eighteen, dash eleven. Eight three, the purpose of the county, the dedication, that has most of the, but, uh. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Be back shortly, thank everybody for this.